All right, we'll call the council meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, take the roll.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
Dizio.
Here.
Brooke.
Here.
I'm gonna do something a little out of the ordinary tonight because we have a closed session, and I wanted to make this comment now rather than waiting until we come back. I wanted to officially, that's the right way to do it, congratulate our boys hockey team, varsity hockey team, for repeating their status as state champions. I think that's just a fantastic feat, and I wanted to get that out while people are still watching instead of tuning out at the end of the meeting while we go into closed session. So, once again, congratulations, and go Raiders. This is the opportunity, we're on the citizen comment portion of the agenda, your opportunity to make any comment that you would like that is something that is not on the agenda. And please, if you would, to keep your comments brief. Try not to repeat other people's comments, and I think that's about it. So, it's your opportunity. Does anybody have a comment? Anyone like to make a comment? Would anyone like to make a comment? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the agenda, consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from February 21st, 2022 regular council meeting, and the February 28th, 2022 special council meeting. Approve council claims in the amount of $1,029,747.62. Approve the renewal of the contract with Meldstrom Inspections LLC. Approve the job description revisions for building inspector and assistant building inspector. Approve filling the vacant patrol officer position. Approve the purchase of a 2022 single axle truck from Nuss Truck Group Incorporated in the amount of $112,244. Approve the purchase of a single axle dump truck with claw accessories from Universal Truck EQ in the amount of $142,878,000. Approve bids totaling $1,336,222 to repair the damage received from the September 17th, 2021 windstorm. Approve the disallowance of excessive assessment claim. Approve the 2022 street maintenance project plans and specifications, and authorize staff to send project out for bid. And approve the bid from Yale Mechanic in the amount of $133,936 to replace the 701st Street chiller.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve. Roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
Dizio.
Yes.
Brooke.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved, consent calendar, consent agenda is approved. Let's see, discussion of possible action regarding Hagan Street Bridge Project design options.
Good evening, council. So, as we've discussed for a number of weeks now, we are in need of making a decision on how to move forward with the design of the Hagan Street Bridge over Interstate 94. I'm not gonna go over all the pros and cons of every alternative that we've looked at, but I did want to highlight a few things that are new since last week's special council meeting. We looked at calling it option 1.5, and with a traffic signal on the north intersection and a roundabout at the south intersection. As is stated in the issue sheet, we found that the option 1.5 handles traffic expected in 2043, but not nearly as much as the other two options that we're currently considering. And also, it's approximately half a million dollars more than the other two options. So, staff has felt that it's not worth pursuing that option based on the extra costs and less traffic accommodated. We also looked at essentially a not full rebuild, but adding a pedestrian bridge to the west of the existing bridge, redecking the existing bridge and widening the existing bridge to add a travel lane, and improving the existing traffic signals, which would gain us, say, 10 years or so until the state would be, you know, ready to come back, potentially for replacing the bridge itself. However, with all that stuff together, the approximate cost of that work is approaching $4 million in and of itself.
What? Say that again.
So, the adding a pedestrian bridge across.
So, on top of the seven?
Nope, so this is just, so the pedestrian bridge across I-94 itself is about a million and a half of that $4 million. So, this is, this, call it option four or whatever, is if we're not replacing the existing bridge, and we're just kind of, for lack of a better term, Jerry, riding things along to get us, you know, 10, 15 years, you know.
Total $4 million, million and a half being a pedestrian bridge.
And the other, the other parts being, the other $2.5 million being redecking the existing bridge and adding a girder and, you know, the intersection work on either side that would need to happen to accommodate that work or whatever, so.
I don't know if this is the time to keep asking questions, but so would that widen it to get another turn lane? So, we would have a straight shot on Cooley going north? And does that line up and just keep turning?
It would essentially allow us to add a right turn lane northbound across the bridge. So, right now, there is not a right turn lane. It's shared with the through lane. So, that would essentially add the right turn lane for northbound, turning right to get to the slip ramp.
So, a million and a half to get our bikers and pedestrians across safely.
On a separate bridge.
Sounds a lot tolerable to me, but... Does it address the traffic problem? Not necessarily, but it's one piece of it for getting our, the safety issue off of that bridge.
Yep, for pedestrians and bicyclists, yep. So, just wanted to throw that out there. So, you guys all know how I feel about which options are left, so I'm not gonna rehash that. But staff is requesting that city council make a motion to choose one of the design options that we've discussed to move forward in the design. If the council feels that we still need more time to discuss these or other potential options, I know we've received some communications from constituents with some other thoughts about potential design options. If we wanted to consider those, we would essentially need to defer the grant that we're currently pursuing right now. So, that's just like the way it is, you know, the timing of it working out. We can't, if we wanna keep, continue to add options and stuff like that, we just have to defer the grant opportunity till the next time.
Did you actually look at building a new bridge east on the other side? So, down by the KFC, towards that way?
Well.
Is that even feasible?
It, it could be feasible, I just, you know, kind of as we've, I didn't wanna, you know, throw a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of extra stuff in an already compressed timeline. And I know that you had kinda indicated that that might not be a good idea. We wanna kinda think about the options we have in front of us right now, but that could be something we could look at if we continue the conversation.
Okay, okay. There is an option that was floated out there to have another bridge built east, kinda down more east towards KFC and where it was the same size height. So, that's what I was asking. But I, you know, I don't know if it's this important if we can defer the grant. Maybe we need to take another, take a look at a little more designs.
And so, the council's prerogative to do so. Just wanted to throw that out there, what that, what that would mean, so.
On the south side of that potential option?
No, east.
But on the south end of that?
I don't know if it's an option.
Isn't that like state property or state right of way?
Well, it's all state right of way where Crestview Drive is, so. I don't, I don't see why the state would be opposed to that, but we would need to flesh that out a little more.
Oh, well.
It's a big ask, that's a whole different can of worms.
You know, I would say that at some point, that that might be an option as we find maybe something complementing what, let's say, option one down the road. If that arises, that might be, might be an option. I don't know that that would be suitable at this point, but.
No, I agree.
Dean, can I ask a, sorry?
Sure.
Can I ask a couple of questions on option one? So, I have a couple of questions just on pedestrian safety. So, has to do with those sidewalks that are on the north side of the bridge? You know, the one that goes up to 11th Street heading north, and then the other one, I guess, heading east on Cooley, kinda by Taco John's there?
Yep.
So, my question is, like, where do those end, or how far do they go?
Yeah, great question. So, we obviously have to have some place we're ending with this project, right? We probably can't extend everything with this project all the way up to, say, E.P. Rock. I don't mention that. Kinda, the, how we drew it up in options one and option two was essentially, you know, get us past, like Taco John's, get us past kinda those tricky constrained areas so that when we do, you know, pull the trigger on something on 11th Street, that all the hardest work is done. Essentially, so all those designs show that's how about going up to Colonial Drive right now, and that's kinda where we're drawing the limits. If we needed to extend or detract part of the project, we can, we can do so as we go through the process of fine tuning the design and that kinda thing. That was kinda the idea of getting those at least past the Taco John's and kinda those constrained areas there.
Right, 'cause I mean, I think, I think my concern is they have to get kids to E.P. Rock. They just have to, whether you're putting them east and then up 13th, or whether you're going north and then over. But those have to be worked out. Now, I know that's not maybe part of the grant, so I don't think we have to solve that tonight, but I'm a little nervous about that. Then my other question is, there's a 12-foot, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Dean, there's a 12-foot pedestrian toward the Minnesota side, basically, lane or place to walk. Is there a concrete, like cement barrier between that 12-foot area and the traffic lane?
We would be looking to put a hard barrier, we'll say. I don't know to what height it would be or what width it would be. That would be something we'd have to go through the design process on, but there would be a actual barrier between pedestrians and vehicles, at least how I intend to have a design.
Because I would like to see that in the design if we, you know, motion to approve or moving that direction tonight. And then the, the other question is a median, sort of, I'm thinking of, you know, Wisconsin, sort of by the high school entrance there. It's a traffic calming measure, right? The median there? You know what I'm talking about, is you're heading north on Wisconsin.
The Vina, Wisconsin?
Vina, Wisconsin, thank you, yeah. So, I guess my question is, could there be, again, on that north side of this intersection, a small median? You know, you've got sort of what you refer to as the pork chops on both sides, right? So, that would help on the one side. But I'm just thinking if we could, if you could squeeze a small median in there, that would be really helpful for, if any traffic is, if any foot traffic, excuse me, is coming over from Taco John's and crossing, and before they, you know, cross over and cross south, I just think if we could get any kind of a small median in there to calm that traffic and give people a safer place in crossing, I think it'd be great.
Is that obstructing the colonial driveway entrance or not that far down?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure, you'd have to look at that. I guess, and I don't have the answer, but I'm just, I'm throwing on the table just as something to think about. Again, I may be looking at tweaks here tonight, and I'm not trying to hold up the whole deal over this, but I think it's something we have to be really cognizant of as we, you know, if we were to move forward with that.
Yeah, I see where you're going with it. We could certainly look at that. I guess my, my initial impression with that is I just don't know how much space is available up there, and I know there's been some concerns from the, from the residents at the condominiums that there's already not a lot of space there. So, we got, we'll have to do that balancing act, I guess, to see. If there is space, yes, I certainly think we could put that in there, but I'll just need to make sure it's not compromising other, other things by having it in there too, so.
Okay, thank you.
Dean, I have a question that I've heard from a few residents. If applying for this grant, and let's, let's say Yahoo goes through, that's amazing, and if it doesn't go through, I'm assuming then, what would our plans be then? Would this go on hold and we would wait for the state to come forward and do the funding? Have we talked about what, what happened then?
Yeah, so that would all kinda be, to be determined, you know, kinda as we've, as we go through the process and figure out if we were, you know, selected, that kinda thing. So, just a little bit of the upcoming grant schedule, I guess. So, we're shooting for April 14th. Excuse me. We won't know the status of that probably until August or something like that. So, while that's, you know, in limbo, so to speak, we'll probably also apply for the federal infrastructure as we talked about, I think, last regular council meeting, the 2023 to 26 program for this project as well. So, kinda have a few different applications out there, you know. For some reason, we got selected for both of them. We can always, I guess, turn down one of them. That would be really an interesting conundrum, but, so.
Can I interject, Sarah? I mean, it was my intention, because this is such a highly prioritized project, I think, for the city, that we would have bonded for it no matter at what, some point is what, what we were gonna do before that, those grants came into play.
Yeah, you know, I think the conversation was we were gonna start this process, figure out what the costs were, and then see if we were gonna include it into our future CIPs, but now that we have so many of these, it was, the transportation, federal transportation funding package was a little unexpected because it actually got approved. I mean, you know, we knew that it was kinda floating out there, but these things usually never get approved, and it did. So, all of a sudden, now there's all this transportation, you know, money out there. So, I think the intent is see what we can get federally, and then after that, we'd have to reevaluate. And the council would have to decide, do you wanna include it in the CIP for ourselves or not?
Okay.
And then another conversation would be, you know, for whatever option gets chosen, say, it's $7.5 million, you know, is that where we're gonna go with this? Or are we gonna go with the $4 million that we just talked about with the pedestrian bridge off to the side and adding a girder, that kinda thing, to lessen our bonding impact? You know, that would be a conversation for the future, that kinda thing. So, but we should probably figure out if we get one of these, hopefully, knock on wood. But, yeah, that would be conversations for the future to have.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I, thinking through all the options, I'm of the thought that option one is the best for the local folks at Colonial Hills for Taco John's. I think it does what we want it to in terms of five lanes and moving traffic. I don't think any design is perfect. I think that option three, which I originally liked, we have got, we got difficulties with the DNR, so we laid that on the table right last time. So, I guess I'm willing to put the motion on the floor to move with approval for option one and applying for that grant money.
I'll second.
We got a motion, a second. Discussion?
I really think option two, one of the reasons that we're doing this is to improve safety here. And the roundabouts do slow the traffic down. You're not gonna have anybody trying to beat the yellow light if you have the roundabouts. And so, I think that option two is the better option.
Anybody else?
In general, I like a roundabout, so I, I understand what you're saying, Joyce. In general, I like the roundabout. I have just, I'm nervous for two reasons. One is I just don't think it's big enough to put in that. It just feels like it's too small of an area. And two is, I've been talking to a lot of folks in those neighborhoods the last few weekends. They don't want roundabouts. I mean, some of them do, right? But the majority I'm hearing is they are nervous about roundabouts, especially older people in those neighborhoods. So, I just think there's kind of a social element, too, we have to consider. But again, I think it's, for me, it's primarily the space. I just don't think it's big enough. And I think certainly the Colonial Hills folks and the Taco John's folks have, you know, expressed concerns about that and backing out and whatnot. So, I, I just think one makes a little more sense, you know, for those reasons, so.
With moving it, the northern roundabout, 15 feet south, further south, that reduces the amount of land that it's going to take up of Taco John's and the condos.
Dean, if we find out that we got the grant money, depending how much could you add on or change orders to that option one? Like, throw a million and a half pedestrian bridge on there?
If we wanted to fund it ourselves, we could.
You couldn't, you couldn't change order that?
Nope, once you get the grant funding, anything over and above the funding you get is your own cost, essentially.
Well, we could bid it as an alternate and then see what it comes in at. That's always an option. We would have to pay for that cost ourselves, but because we already have a contractor in place, you never know what that alternate could come.
But then the grand scheme of things on a project this size, a million and a half is not that much more. And for the purpose of safety, I'd be willing to take that vote.
Yeah, I mean, we would, we'd have to bid it as an alternate, right, Dean? And we would just see what, what it came out as, is that?
Yeah, so Randy, if I'm understanding you correctly, if we, you're saying if we went with option one, like you would want the pedestrian stuff essentially not on the vehicle bridge, it would be on a separate bridge.
Which would save some costs at some point. Now, putting a barrier up.
Yeah, I don't know if that would be feasible to do as an alternate. I think that'd be something we'd probably wanna flesh out through the, you know, remaining design process here.
We can get the sign off of, of it, we could try it, though, for sure. I like the idea.
It's very similar to the number of the ARPA funds. But that, that just intrigues me. I mean, just knowing the way that Carmichael is right now with pedestrians and just the nightmare that is, you know, expanding, widening that bridge, having it five lanes down there on the 11th Street, Hagan Street Bridge, just, it makes sense to move that pedestrian biking off of that. I don't know.
But if you've got the roundabouts, if you have the roundabouts at each end, then people are not going to be driving as fast on the, the bridge itself because they're going to have to slow down for the upcoming roundabout.
If everybody obeyed that, I mean.
Well, most people would.
But I'll tell you, and I think Sarah could attest to her dad trying to cross that bridge every summer as he bikes and walks. He doesn't feel comfortable doing it. He does it, but it's like playing Frogger.
Yeah.
And I don't think, I don't think roundabouts are gonna help that. We just gotta get them off the bridge, is my thought.
I agree. I mean, I, I'm kind of in Paul's court here with, with the roundabouts. I'm a fan of roundabouts. I'm not a fan of a roundabout in this specific usage. Just feels, feels like we're forcing it in.
As, as much as I want to, I mean, I've heard what our experts have told us, and they feel strongly about these roundabouts, and as much as I want to support and affirm them, the overwhelming feedback I've received is that people really are concerned about it. And even in my mind, I'm sitting there, walking through, trying to figure out how that would be if it was kids, if it was a senior citizen, if it's myself going through that bike, if it's Paul's kids going through that bike, through that area. And I just have major concerns with the roundabout. I just can't see how in my mind, how that feels safer than a signal and the right of way given to the pedestrian. Now, like you, Councilmember Morissette and Mr. Alms, I am very intrigued about that pedestrian bridge, if there is a way we could do that. And I do think that would divert pedestrians from that, the Carmichael Bridge, which is even more dangerous in my opinion, so.
And with that bridge, we could have a better welcoming mat, if you will, welcome Hudson or whatever on it, and a nice new shiny.
Good point, yep.
The aesthetics of it.
Randy, do you think, sorry, do you think you'd have the same difficulties with the DNR permits and whatnot for a pedestrian bridge?
I would. I'd weigh you to, you know. I'm the one that'd ask about the DNR, I'll tell you.
I'm not sure I'm even the right guy to ask about the DNR. You know, from what they indicated to us with, you know, when we were discussing with them about option three, it sounded like, to them, having stuff at the more or less existing bridge area would be more palatable to them than downhill, so to speak. So, what specific distance do you have away from the original bridge? I have no idea what would be palatable for them, but I, I, I don't see how they would come against that, but I'm also not the DNR, so I don't know, but.
I would assume the pillars wouldn't have to be as big as, as a, you know.
Generally, we'll have a single pillar for a bridge of that stature, so to speak.
But I was gonna bring up, too, tonight, what Mr. Morissette brought up is.
You can call me Randy.
Okay, Randy. You know, forget about the additional bridge, the bridge that we're redoing as the 11th Street, Hagan Street Bridge, right? That can be a more welcoming facade, I hope, too.
It's hard to get worse than what's there right now, so. Yes, we will make it more welcoming no matter what happens, yep.
Because that's the biggest feedback that I've gotten, not the biggest, but some of the biggest feedback that I've gotten from, from people just all over is just how, you know, we're the gateway to Wisconsin.
So, if we had a separate pedestrian bridge, so then the, or pedestrian slash bicyclists, they'd still have to get through the intersections at either side with the lights, correct?
Another thing we could look at would be, is there a place to put the, a separate pedestrian bridge east of the existing bridge? You know, if it's better to cross them at a different location than in the intersections, we could flesh that one out a little bit, too. But I've done almost zero thought into that, so can't really give you too much on that tonight, but.
Well, isn't most of the, the new bike paths all on the south end? So, why would we wanna flip them? I mean, you got the one on Crestview, but most of them all over the new development, you know, for comfort keepers there, and then come out, cross.
Yeah, so the existing trail of Hagan Streets on the west side. So, it would make more sense in my head, it just got, feel to keep them on the west side of that bridge. But, I mean, it's something we can look at if, if there's less comfort crossing at the intersections themselves.
So, if I, yeah, I agree with Paul there, or do I gotta call you Mr. Dizio or Councilman?
Whatever you prefer.
I, I think that we should try to, you know, move forward with option one, and then if Aaron is correct, we can try to, you know.
Figure something out with the process, right? If we can do it as an alternative.
I think they call that creative accounting in the accounting world.
We can't get too creative, it's federal funding. We have to, you know, what I mean. I do know what you mean, though, Randy.
But like I said, a million and a half for safety, in the whole grand scheme of things, I said I would vote, and I would vote for.
Yeah, well, and even if we, even if we bid it as, as option one is presented, but then still have that alternate that we could add that somehow adjacent or something like that, you know, I guess we could see. I mean, even if you had both, would it be the end of the world? If we got a decent bid in the alternate, but we still had the pedestrian walkway on there? You know, I, I don't know, but, you know, it's something we could try to figure out, I think.
Yep.
But for tonight's purposes, just for getting the grant money, that's what I'm kinda thinking, so.
All right, everybody good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Council will meet in closed session to consider two separate matters exempt from open meeting requirements pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, and Sub G, respectively, in order to deliberate the potential purchase of public properties and to confer with legal counsel regarding strategy for closing out emergency medical services fund balances.
Move to go into closed session.
Second.
Got a motion, second to go into closed session. Roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
Dizio.
Yes.
Brooke.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved, going into closed session, we'll step across the hall. All right, we are back in open session, having concluded a closed session. We just had our conversation about, about potential land being purchased. That'll come up later, as well as EMS funds, and that will be taken up at the next meeting, be on the agenda for the next council meeting. That's it. Do we have, oh, I've got nothing for future meetings, anybody?
I have two, a few things I'm hoping that could be discussed. One, I think there's some confusion on absentee ballots and putting them in the utility box. So, I'm wondering if we can get clarification on that, so that's one. And I don't know if that's for tonight or for the future.
Let's answer that one right now, don't. And we will actually, unless the state changes direction on the absentee ballot drop boxes, we're just gonna seal that box off completely, no utility bill, no nothing. So, there's no, no accidental dropping of them, because honestly, we don't even know what we're gonna do if somebody would mistakenly put one in there. So, we're just gonna seal that box off. So, you drop it off in person is the only option we have right now, or the mail return.
Sure. Is that something that we can put? Is that something that we can put on social media, on our website? And have we thought about ways that maybe we can make it for people that work during, you know, work during their business hours, or they're voting in person is their option or dropping it in the mail?
Very strict requirements that, you know, we, we want to make sure that we're following exactly, so, you know, we will put more information out there, especially when the ballots start going out.
So, in the mailing the uniform absentee ballot instructions, it does state on there that there is no Dropbox option, so it must be delivered by mail or in person at the clerk's office, 8 to 4:30.
And does it need to be delivered by the person voting, or could?
As it stands right now, yes.
Okay, thank you for all that clarification, I'm so sorry you're having to go through that. Then, I was hoping, I watched the candidate forum, and there was a lot of discussion about public comments, and I was wondering if we could have that on our future agenda if we want to explore other options, so I'm hoping for discussion and possible action on that. And then I was also hoping that at the next one, we could have an update on our transportation. I know that was something that came up with potential new options for us this fall, so I was, would love an update on that as well, thank you.
Thanks, anybody else?
Moves adjourned.
Second.
Got a motion second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved, we stand adjourned, thanks, everybody.